Hello and welcome back to another episode of the Mentium Podcast. In this episode of Stories of Impact, I sit down with my sister Dr. Anne Kiki, an immigrant from Cote d'Ivoire and a powerful advocate for educational equity in Colorado. Now, serving as the president of the Aurora Public Schools Board of Education. Dr. Kiki shares her extraordinary journey from Cote d'Ivoire to Colorado, but also working in the criminal justice system to becoming a statewide leader in education policy and reform. She opens up about her passion for serving marginalized and underserved communities, the importance of representation in school leadership, and why she believes that immigrants are not just part of the system, they are part of the solution. Whether you're an educator, policymaker, parent, or someone passionate about change, this conversation will inspire you to use your voice and your vision to make a difference. So please stay tuned and discover what it means to lead with purpose, serve with compassion, and create an impact that lasts. Dr. Anne, it is a pleasure for me to welcome you to Stories of Impact in the Mentium Podcast. Now, the first thing that I would like to ask you is really, you came from Cote d'Ivoire. So from Cote d'Ivoire to Colorado, and now you are the president of the Aurora Public School Board. Your journey is nothing short of remarkable. Can you share with the audience here what life experiences or turning points shaped your passion for educational equity and public service?
Thank you so much, Madjama, for having me on this podcast. Hello, everybody. Bonjour, bonsoir. As Madjama said, my name is Dr. Anne Kiki, and I am so excited being here with you to share my story.
Thank you.
My story is no more different than any immigrant story. You know, I originally came here to further my education. And eventually, I stayed because I met a gentleman before I finished my courses. And we decided to get married and I stayed. And this is how my journey started, really. We got married, started to create a family, and soon it's time for my kid to go to school. But make no mistake, prior to that, I have always been an activist. Always had the platform of, you know, the African Leadership Group or any other group to speak and advocate for people. But really, the advocacy for me in education started when my kid started to go to school. You know, here in some districts, when you fill out the form, they're asking you how many languages you speak, pretty much your demographics. And within your demographic, they want to know how many languages you speak. I speak several languages, so I was proud to put those languages down. Little did I know that that would probably, that could probably come against my child. They thought because my child come from a home where several languages are spoken outside of English, she should be in an English language program. And that's where my personal journey started.
Okay, but Dr. Anne, I don't mean to cut you short, but I think you were jumping so quickly in your work. This shows so much how passionate you are about what we're about to discuss.
Yeah.
But if you hear what I asked you, I said, from Cote d'Ivoire to Colorado, I really want you to start by describing or sharing your journey with the viewers. How did you get here? And back home, what were you doing before even you thought of coming to the US to further your education? Talk to me about back home first, before we jump into Colorado.
I appreciate that. I am from Ivory Coast. I went to school in Ivory Coast. I was born of a nurse and an architect. My father was an architect and my mother was a nurse. Their soul rests in peace. They are now on the other side. I am the second of five siblings. And I grew up in a normal home. When I was two, my parents divorced and I was raised by my mother, a strong woman, whom I owe everything I am today. She raised us with equity. She raised us with strong values and principles, especially her girls. I grew up in a Christian home. Yes, I went to catechism. I was baptized for those, for the Christians, you know, and I was going to church every Sunday. And for me, my journey started when I was in my teenage age. For some reason, I started having issues with depression. People didn't know at home, you know, what was really wrong with me. So instead of putting me under medication, it was more like prayers. And so, one day, I made a vow. After a really long conversation with myself, I made a vow that if I was able, if God was able to get that depression off of me, I will serve people as a way of thanks. I will lay my life down for people, serving people. So that's how my journey started. I went, I started, you know, I would go to school. I was a very good kid. My parents made sure that, you know, we held ourselves with standard. Now, I want to put something, I want to put something here. I was fortunate to have a mother who fought for us. She made sure that there was always light at home, there was always food on the table, even if she had to go without herself. But her five kids have to have food on the table.
Beautiful.
I didn't have a whole lot of friends because my mother didn't think that peer pressure was a good thing. So we were sort of isolated. It was me and my siblings. Go to school, come, have tutors, the tutor will come, and we will get tutored until it's time to go to bed.
Okay.
And then we'll go to bed. Living that life, shortly after I became a teenager, my sister moved to the US. So it was me and my four siblings. So I became the oldest child. And you all know, in Africa, the oldest child does everything. So now, the burden that my sister had was carrying, came upon me.
Absolutely.
It came on me, and I had to raise three boys. I would back my brother, the baby one, while I'm making sure that the others are probably doing their homework or are not getting in any type of trouble. Make sure that they're fed, watch after them, and all that good stuff. If they don't have good grades, it's because of me. If they have good grades, it's because of me, because mom was always gone.
That's what I was about to say, yes.
She was working just, it's this thing with nurses is all over the world. They work long hours. So a single mother with four kids, working long hours, and we were literally raised by maids, by the maids. Because my father wasn't there. My father was an architect, as I said, and he was living in Belgium. That's where his practice was.
Oh, wow.
I did not have a great relationship with my father. However, as I said, my mom made sure that we lacked nothing, nothing at all. I grew up seeing lack around me, but I can say I was blessed to have what I needed, to thrive, to, you know, growing up, to succeed. And raising five kids with one income was something that I watched my mom struggle. I, to this day, I remember one night, she put us all to bed and I guess she thought we were all asleep and I could hear her pray and cry and asking God to give her the strength to raise children that would not put her to shame. That was a turning point for me.
Wow.
I made the vow that I will not, never do something that will hurt my mother's heart. And I think maybe that's where depression set in in me because then I started carrying a lot of burden in me and looking at, you know, things in black and white. This is bad, this is good. And making sure that my mom never had to worry about my siblings. And that was really dear and near to my heart. So when it was time for me to go to college, it was hard for me to leave because I was worried about my siblings and my mother.
Absolutely.
I had a hard conversation. I did not want to go to college. But she said to me, no child of her will be uneducated. If she could not have a master's degree, all of her children will have a master's degree. If she could not have a bachelor's degree, all of her children will have a bachelor's degree. And for sure, for sure, before she dies, she will know that at least one of her children bears, has the name, the DR behind the name. This is how strong she believed in education.
Wow.
How strong. And I asked her why once. She said, her growing as a girl amongst boys, she didn't have the chance to go to school. Her being a nurse was pure luck. It was someone who paid for her schooling because her father did not believe that girls should be educated. It was someone else who paid for her education. And she was able to take a certificate, a certification. And it's from that certification, she was inducted into the nursing, a nursing program. A pre-certification inducted her in a nursing program then back home. And from there, she realized that she has a knack for medicine. And she came first in her class, in her cohort. She got her X-ray certification. She went on, pursued her degree a little bit longer and then got the full X-ray diploma. And she was, she became the trainee or the trainer of all of the other X-ray nurse practitioners, X-ray nurse practitioners that would come. She was working in a private hospital then. And she swore to herself that education would be what her kids will have before anything else because she knows that education is one way to be poverty. Even though her brothers were allowed to go to school, none of them came out as she did. They had three siblings and she carried the weight of her family, being the firstborn child.
Wow. Talking about a strong woman now, you know, one thing about the interviews like these, these shows for me, most of the people who came so far, I've already known them. But when we do the interview, there is a whole different level of understanding that I wouldn't have about like why they are, who they are right now. So for you, what I'm picking up from what you put down about the education is really, it was your mom's wish that you were fulfilling in pursuing a PhD. Can you tell me a little bit about like how, why the US? Why you went from Cote d'Ivoire to land here in Colorado? Where you could have gone maybe to Belgium where that was, or to Paris? Because you spoke French. All your education was done through French.
Yes.
But yet you landed here in US. Walk me through that journey and tell me why the PhD? Because a lot of people would be happy with a masters, but that's not you. You pursue it. And when I heard what you did your PhD in, I was like, wow, criminal justice?
Yes.
Okay, talk to me about that, please.
It is interesting that you asked this question and you mentioned Paris and why Colorado? Because that in itself is another side of my story. My sister, as I said, you know, left the country to the US and she moved here in Colorado. My sister lived in Colorado for 10 years.
Wow.
Without seeing her siblings. And when I finished college back home with a bachelor's in business administration, I was actually supposed to go to Paris and continue my education there in business administration. That was actually the plan. And when my sister heard that, okay, there is an opportunity for me to go abroad and finish my education, she said, why don't you come to the US? At the time, I had already gotten a job and I was working as an executive assistant to a CEO of an organization called GTZ. In French, we will call it GTZ. And that was around where the repatriation of Liberian, of Liberian asylees have started in my country. I was really, really young then. I had gotten this job through my internship and I started working there. And I was doing the paperwork, you know, office manager, setting up appointment, managing the CEO's calendar and all that good stuff. And the opportunity came, it was a German organization. And the opportunity came for me to go to Germany to my education. Oh, by the way, I speak a little bit of German, German.
I didn't know that. You're full of surprises.
I took German, you know, in school, but then I thought it was too hard and I switched to Spanish. That's where my Spanish language comes from. I learned Spanish back home, not here in the US. So either go to Germany or go to France to finish some sort of certificate of my education. That's when my sister said, well, it's been 10 years I haven't seen, I haven't laid eyes on any member of my family. Could that be a possibility that you can come to the US? I said, well, let's see what are the paperwork that needed to be, you know, to be done. I want to go to school. My sister started looking for a school. She started looking for a sponsor and all of that. She found a school, found a sponsor. And while she was doing what she was doing, I was just completing my paperwork to go to France. It gets better. It gets better. It gets really better. I get, my sister connects me with someone here who was thrilled to sponsor me because she's heard how much my sister raves about me and the things that I have accomplished back home. And she said she wanted to sponsor me to come. Now, remember, I had talked to you a little bit about me struggling with depression and the small vow that I made.
Yes.
And she said to me, my church has a program right now where they train people to serve, where they train people who want to be trained to serve and help communities which will be interested in coming to Bible college. And I said, yes, why not? Because my sister had already kind of walked me through, trained me how to answer those questions. And the woman was thrilled to sponsor a African girl, you know, to come to the US. She furnished all the paperwork. Meanwhile, I'm still doing my paperwork to go to France. I completed all of that through the organization, through GTZ. And the day that I am supposed to go to the embassy, the French Embassy, to get my visa, the same day, I also received the packet from my sister that I am supposed to send to, to take to the embassy, the United States Embassy. So I do both. I go to the, I go to the French Embassy and I go there, I go for the interview. It was pretty much a walkover. I get the visa immediately. It was just, you know, they keep your visa, your passport then, and then you come and get it a few days later.
Yes.
I drop my passport and I go to the American Embassy. I drop my paperwork and all of that. I do the formalities. And I am asked to bring my passport on X day. It so happened that that X day was the day that I was also supposed to pick up my passport with the French visa on it. And so, the day arrives, I grab my passport from the French Embassy with the visa in it and then I drop it off to the US Embassy. I get a call a couple of days later and say, but it seems like you are getting ready to go to, you have a French visa. I said, yes, but if there is a possibility to go to come visit the US, I would love that. So they agree in giving me a visa.
Look at how you played it.
Student visa.
You're always a politician then. Oh my goodness, look at that hand.
So I get a visitor's visa for the US and a student visa for France. I decide to come and visit my sister.
Okay.
In visiting my sister, I meet the woman who chose to sponsor me. She truly thought that I came with a student visa. And when I told her what had happened, she said, no, you're not going to go home. We're going to pursue, we're going to pursue it here. We're going to enroll you, you're going to, you stay. It's laid deep in my heart to help you. That is the word of that woman. So I never went home. That's how I stayed in the US. She does all the formalities and I am enrolled in that very Bible college. And I took four years. I walk out with an associate degree in counsel, biblical counsel.
Okay.
On the fourth year, that's when I meet the gentleman who will become my husband here in the US.
Okay.
That is my story from Cote d'Ivoire to Colorado. This is how I got in Colorado, from my blood sister who wanted to see her old sister. And fate got in the way and somehow worked everything. And I came and I stayed. I never went to France.
For me, what's beautiful about this is that I am learning all of this at the same time as my audience. I've known you for at least, what, six years now? I believe because, okay. When you said you were the executive assistant and I started to remember why you were so good when you were my assistant in public speaking class, how you would organize everything and then we just come and nailed it together. I, wow. Okay, so Dr. Anne, from Bible school to criminal justice?
Yes.
Why?
That in itself is another story.
Okay.
So, remember, I meet this gentleman. We get married.
Okay.
This gentleman, for the life of him, could not get the police away from him. Him and the police were married. Always get in trouble and go to jail.
Okay, was he an African, an African-American?
African-American.
Okay.
The father of my daughter. He would always somehow find himself in trouble and get himself in jail. And who does he have as his significant other?
You. Yes.
I decided I have to learn how the law works here, how the rules and regulations in criminal justice work here, so I can help him. At some point, he was in probation. At some point, he was in parole. And I had to learn all of these. What are the things that he can do? What are the things that he cannot do? How do I advocate for him? That's where the criminal justice came.
Oh my goodness.
I took some courses in criminal justice. I got my bachelor's. And my bachelor's was pretty fast because I already came here with some credits that counted for me, right? So I pretty quickly dove into the bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And I started to find it very fascinating. Criminal law is amazing. The criminal justice system in America is completely fascinating to me. And so I decided to do my masters. I did my masters and I thought, you know, this is really something I want to do. I want to research more in it. But how about I try to, since I love criminal law, actually, right? Let me try and get into law. Let me do law. But for the life of myself either, I could not pass the LSAT or the GRE or the GMAT. But now, I am just not good in standardized testing.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you. Some people are not made for that.
Yes, I could not. I just could not. I would study, study, study. I would ace the English and vocabulary part and all of that. The math, I can't. So I tried it a couple of times. I tried the GMAT. I tried the GRE. I studied for the LSAT. I just could not pass it. So I decided I'm going to go for my doctorate.
And the doctorate is in what?
Criminal justice.
Man, okay.
And so I did, I had a doctorate in criminal justice, minoring in criminology. So I understand the why and the why not of crimes and what brings crimes? And how do we have certain areas, certain pockets of our communities that is high crime rated versus others that is low crime rated? And how the police can curb things and how the police is supposed to really help the different forms of policing that there are? I actually teach that now because I teach criminal justice at Red Rocks Community College to students that are as passionate as I am. uh, to students that are as passionate as I am.
So, Dr. N, your work with uh, youth and adults alike in that space. And your education in criminal justice, how, how has that experience influenced your views on discipline, accountability and student development within the school system?
Yeah. Discipline, accountability is something that is so important. When we talk about discipline in America, it depends on which side you are, right? Uh, oftentimes you hear uh, certain, certain populations uh, uh, more, uh, receive more consequences i- in discipline than others. And accountability is not balanced. And it is true because of the way the system has been put in place. Let me put it this way. The system is working exactly the way it has been intended to work.
And what is that? What do you mean by that?
You have to go way back in the roots of the, the creation of this country and um, the, the the slavery time and the post-slavery time and this, you know, um, uh, segregation time and all of that. All of these things are very, very systemic and they have been put in place for a reason. Just as an aside, I, I also want, want, you know, our community to know that I was appointed to be part of the uh, discipline reform, education, discipline reform in our state of Colorado for the K, for our K twelve community, for our.
I didn't know that.
Yes. I was appointed by the commissioner, Commissioner Cordova, our education commissioner, to be part of the discipline task force. So the new discipline metrics that you see, I, I, I had. I, I was, I was privileged to be part of it and, and have my voice. Of our community to shape that. Absolutely. So when we talk about accountability, when we talk about discipline, when we talk about consequences to um, actions before the law. Yes. It has its deep root into a system that again, as I say, is working exactly the way it's supposed to be working. That's the reason why reform is needed and has been needed.
Okay.
But back to my story about how my education background is linked to what I do today. Education and my love for education.
So while you were going back to that, I want you to pick up from where you left off earlier. What really got you into advocating for education? The story of your, your daughter.
That's exactly where I'm, I'm going. So I meet this gentleman, get married, I try to help him get through, you know, his different encounters with the law. Um, and all of that. Get my diploma, my degrees. Um, I am able to help him. I have a child. Now it's time for this child to go to school. As I said, you fill out the form, they ask you all kinds of demographic, demographic questions, which is needed. You know, um, I feel that, I, I feel those forms. I am proud to put all kinds of languages that I do speak. Only for me to find out that, oh, my kid is um, looked at as someone who does not actually speak English. Even though she was born here and the only language that she speaks is English. She does not know French, she does not know Spanish, she does not, you know, what we speak at home to her is English. So that is really where my journey in K twelve education started. With my.
Dr. N, I don't wanna cut you short again here, but I, I have to share this with you. The exact same thing happened to my daughter.
Oh, I know.
Like school, they just look at her name. Not even a form that we filled out because I don't remember that. Maybe um, her mom did.
Yep.
But they looked at her name and actually put her in ESL.
Absolutely.
Which would require for her to go and study English after school.
That's correct.
And to us, it was like they, she would be taken away from her homework and all those stuff. While the other kids are at home working, she will be there. And when she got home, she's tired. All of that. We had to go to that school and ask them why.
That is correct.
They couldn't give us an answer at all. And I said, look, call her and you speak with her. They just assumed that we didn't speak English.
English because of the name. But in my case, my child had an American name. And you're right. Um, if you probably ask your wife, she would, she will remember if she's the one who filled out the form.
Yes.
The form, they ask, how many languages do you speak? And you have to, you know, you can fill it out. English, others, you know. And but in my case, my child has an American name. She has an American surname. So they couldn't go by that, even though my surname is, is a foreign surname. Hers and her father's are American. So they look at the form and they say, well, it could be that since mother is a single mother, right, it could be that they don't speak English at home. So that's where my advocacy started. And to your point, I encountered many families that were like you in your case. Just the last name, they look at the last name and they, they conclude immediately that that kid needs to be in, in, in the after-school program, in a English uh, language program, in a ESL program. Or need to take additional English courses and be tested in English before they could be moved, uh, moved forward. Yes. So that's how I started fighting. For my child. No, my child is an American child. She speaks nothing but English. I may speak with an accent, but I speak English at least clearly and you can hear me. You can understand me. So no. French is not what we speak at home, even though I speak French fluently.
Even if it was, I think it would have been, they, it should have been seen as a gift. A plus for, as a plus for the kids to be exposed to something other than English. It works well in the brain, so then what is the issue? As I said, in our case, we had to fight it. You know, she, she didn't go at all because once we received the letter, we went over there and they pulled her out of the classroom, spoke to her, no accent at all.
Yep.
They were really, they just felt dumb doing that.
Absolutely. I totally, I totally agree with you. This is how I met so many parents who were in the same case, more or less. Couldn't understand why their kids were in this program that was taking time. You know, unnecessary time, unnecessary learning time for their kids. They were being told, there were even Caucasian parents in this family. Imagine Caucasian parents who have adopted kids from other, from, from foreign countries, who had to fight the same thing.
I didn't know that.
Oh, it, it is, it is real. And so. And so, one thing leading to the other, this is how I meet a gentleman who said, I know exactly where your voice could be elevated. Because people need to hear you. What you're advocating for is important for us and our children. Takes me by the hand and he helps me to meet Papa Dia.
So that's how you came to ALG?
That's how I came to ALG.
Oh my gosh.
The gentleman said, I know exactly where your voice could be elevated. We need you. And when I met Papa Dia, he said, my dear sister, where have you been all this time?
Of course.
That was the first question he asked me. And this is where my advocacy for education, my passion for education started. It started with one child. But hearing the stories of other parents, other families, I could not be silenced.
Wow.
I could not be silenced. Added to other issues even, you know, I could not be silenced. And this is how, one thing leading to the other, we started to uh, speak at different forms, to speak on different platforms, all the way at the state level, all the way at the state of education level, talking about transportation, talking about um, um, how uh, reform could be done. Talking about different things that, that matters for our community within the education, within public education.
So is it, is it, is it what led you to, to run for school board position? Like, because look, you were not the only parent who went under that. I just told you my case and I know, as you said, there are so many others. But maybe we, somebody like me, just took care of one child.
Yep.
But you decided to take care of the community. Why the run for office to handle that?
Well, the run for office didn't come from me. Now, if you re- remember, in twenty nineteen, there was buzz about the pandemic starting, blah, blah, blah. And boom, everything shut down. Our kids were left on their own.
Yep.
Well, Papa and I sat down and we put a tutoring program together. I remember it was Papa, Alphonse. That was, that was something that was in the heart of Papa even before the pandemic. Not, he was not able to put it together. And he said, yeah, we have an opportunity now. Would you look at that and come up with a curriculum? And it was a blessing. And during that, this is when Papa and other people at ALG asked me if I could run, if I, if I could consider running for office. Because uh, according to them, what I was doing was way bigger than just ALG. Because there are also other immigrants that probably are not in ALG, but that could be my voice. And that's how I was asked to run for office. And I did run. I said, yes. As you know, uh, uh, professor, when you're asked something at ALG, it's not really asked, you're just being told to do, you know.
You've been voluntold.
You've been voluntold. Absolutely. So I was voluntold and um, with the help of our community, again, with the help of our community. They saw my heart, they saw the genuineness of what um, I was doing. We want, we want together. I can remember to this day how tirelessly you work with me, you help me. How tirelessly uh, some of our younger brothers and sisters walk for me. Because remember, when I, when we decided that I was gonna run, the union in our, in, in Aurora also decided I was not someone that they wanted to endorse. Because they did not trust where I was coming from. So I did not get the endorsement, even though we believe and we truly believe in public education.
Yes.
Not get the endorsement of the union.
Okay, well, look, they just didn't understand. I don't think, I might be naive. But if they knew who you are and what you've done prior to asking them, they would have gladly endorsed you. Because like, right now, even without them, you are a school board member. But also, no, you are actually now the president. That speaks volumes.
Yes, I am. And the two things that I advocate for in whole district and actually wherever I go, students, teachers, because to me, those two come together. Without one, the other one cannot exist. They are. We gotta take care of our teachers and make sure that their working environment is, is exactly the way it's supposed to be, is safe, is uh, uh, positive. And give them the tools and the resources that they need to educate our students. And make sure that we keep them accountable as well. So I could for these two groups.
What message, Dr. N, do you have for immigrant parents and students who feel unseen or underrepresented in the public education system?
The message is simple, Professor. Teachers, school administration want to hear from you. We wanna know what's working, we wanna know what's not working. It is your voice that's missing as a parent and as a community member. There are so many places where in our school system, you could be valuable. There are so many committees, you could belong to help not just your kid, but other students alone. Because you are that community member whom we want to have input from.
Okay.
So come on in. Is it easy? No, it is not easy. It takes time. It takes energy. It takes passion. But trust me, the education system wants and needs your voice. It is valuable.
Okay. Now let me ask you this. If somebody hears this, this message and decided that she, he or she wants to do something, like how do they go about it? And also, how would you describe your day-to-day job in the uh, public school arena right now?
Absolutely. Um, as a parent, as I say, you can start as small as, you know, uh, belonging to your parent teacher uh, committee.
Okay.
Or your PTA, right, Parent Teacher Association. You can belong to that.
Okay.
Also belong to your school accountability committee. You know, where you make sure that you hear reports from the school principal. And the school principal talks to you and you know exactly what is going on, including all of the events and everything that's going on to your school. But if you wanted to go even higher, at the district level, you can literally request to be part of your district accountability committee as well. There, at that level, you hear from district officials. You hear from um, district leadership, giving you a report on how every student, the whole student population is doing and how many the budget that you, the taxpayer, right, gives to your school is being spent. There are so many ways. If you are somebody who is very, very education inclined and you care about curriculum, there is the curriculum committee. You can belong to that. We always want um, parents' voice there to, to make sure that the curriculums that the uh, the district adopts is exactly what parents also wanna see. We have uh, other committees where uh, every time a district passes a bond, you decide how this money is spent.
Is spent, okay.
Before the bond is being done. So there are so many ways you could be involved. You can even be a coach for your, your child's school, for many different sports. There are so many ways you can be involved.
Involved, okay. Okay. Well now, as you know, this. Well, now, as you know, this season on the Mentium podcast is called Stories of Impact. So I cannot end the show without discussing impact with you. And I know you serve on multiple task forces. Shaping education policy in the States. So what is your vision for transforming education, especially for underserved communities? And what gives you hope right now? So the other side of the same question is like, how is your work right now? Aside, aside from uh the advocacy work that you were doing? What are the ways are you impacting the community where you, you live?
Every time I show up in any of the task force where I have been appointed. I bear in mind the immigrant voices. I bear in mind the immigrant students. I bear in mind the first and second generation immigrant students. Not to say I dismiss others, but because I'm an immigrant, I walk in these shoes, I understand the struggles. So I bear that in mind. And it is the voice that I bring into that space. As Papa would say, if you're not at the table, you are on the menu. And I wear that every time I walk into those spaces.
Wow.
Asking the question, what about? What about? What about? Are we looking at it through these lenses, these difference? And people who know me will say, Anne, your perspective is so different, but so valuable. Because when you put out your perspective, it makes us think. To me, you cannot continue to do the same thing over and over, expecting a different result.
That's insanity.
Definition of insanity.
Absolutely.
Gotta think innovative, you gotta be able to take risks, you gotta be able to think beyond even your, your own thinking. And yourself to think higher, bigger. And take the risk even to try and implement certain things. If it works, great, if it doesn't work, lesson learned, let's move on, let's change, let's try.
There are no failures, just lessons.
Absolutely, I would agree with you, there are no failures, just lessons. So when I go into these spaces, to me, I look at. Where's the problem? This is how I try to impact. Identify the problem, analyze the problem, come up with solutions. Different solutions, analyze all of these solutions and pick out the best option. Bearing in mind my community. Because I know, and that was, that was one thing that Papa impressed in me earlier on. Everywhere you go, remember that to Anne, there's a whole community behind you. So anything that you do. Will impact your community. Everything you say will impact your community, remember that. And it is in with this that I walk in and with this that I bring, I, 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 I voice my ideas. Are they always easy? No, but sure, I am not going to be quiet. That accent, you're gonna hear it unapologetically, you're gonna hear. So identify the problem, analyze the problem, identify the different solutions that there are. Analyze them and pick out the best possible, you know, option. That's what I.
Dr. Anne, I am so proud to call you my sister and I was so honored. To work with you on the campaign to get you elected. I mean, everything that I was able to do was not enough for me. Because it takes the village to raise a child, that's how it is said in our um, in our culture.
Yes.
But the most important thing is like for you to pave the way for other immigrants to walk on. Because after you became elected, it was very clear to us. That this is what we need to be doing more of. Because having your own somewhere is not the same thing as being represented by people. Who just assume what's good for you. As you said, when you walk in, in any space, you walk in with that immigrant heart. Not that you were discriminating against anybody, but anybody else is taken care of.
That's right.
Your community, so raising your voice.
Yes.
For the community becomes something of a paramount importance.
Yes.
And it is my understanding that your term is coming to an end and then you would like to run again. Like, is there any, any message that you would like to deliver to the audience? Or to pass on to them that I was not able to ask you?
You know, um, after I ran and I, I got on the board, eh, that did not mean that I stopped working for my community. And, and, and Professor, you know that. I still chair the parent uh uh uh, the, 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 the parent education committee at ALG. I still chair that committee, where we discuss issues that pertain to us. Um, that different boards uh uh put out. Where we uh, we uh also make sure that uh we, we, we discuss how we, we will elevate our voices. Where we hear from leaders, both from the K twelve. The, the, the K twelve field, the K twelve world, right? And also the higher education, because education doesn't end in K twelve.
No.
Right? We gotta hear from these leaders as well, we bring them on, they talk to us. We seek them out. Where do our kids want to go to college? We have a wonderful relationship with the School of Mine. We have a wonderful relationship with CU Boulder. We have a wonderful relationship with the uh 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 uh, the, the, the leaders. And even the Board of CU Region. Why? Because it matters. We want them to know that as humble as we are, we mean business.
I remember clearly when, when the dean, um, maybe not the dean, but with the one who's in charge of the whole. Um, university system in Colorado, is it the chancellor? Uh, he came to ALG with, with another guy and they were there really selling the school system to us.
Absolutely.
Like letting us know why we should send our kids to their school system. That to me was, was absolutely powerful. But also, ALG is doing.
Do not mistake, it is not affirmative action. This is not affirmative action.
Okay.
They are coming and selling it to us because they know and they see the value in our kids.
Absolutely.
Are raising amazing gear.
Because of the voices also that you and your colleagues are raising. Because ALG is doing a phenomenal job in that field. Because I know every year during African Impact, there is the Education Summit.
Summit.
That every time I attend, I am just blown away by the people who come to attend. Like, it's, it's, it's really the VIPs of education who will be there seeking our support.
Yes.
To do things like that. All of that is made possible by people like you.
Absolutely. And, and I cannot thank our community enough. Because without them, we cannot do that.
Absolutely.
You, 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 we, we, we have to, we have to recognize that, right? Without them, we cannot do that. Them understanding, the community understanding that business means business. And when it's time to raise our voices, we come as one man and we raise our voices. Is the most impactful thing that we could do in Colorado.
But how, how can we further support you to get re-elected in the same position? What can the community do right now?
Thank you so much for asking that. And as time go by and when, when I announced again and it is official. Um, and, and by all rules.
So am I already spilling the bins? It is not officially yet.
By, by the rules and the regulations of the state of Colorado, I will come to you. Asking in for your support by way of, you know, pitching in. And supporting the campaign. With your, with your money, with your volunteering, because that's what it takes. The first time I ran, I ran uh the most amazing, it was in the news. I ran the most amazing grassroots campaign. People did not believe in us.
Yeah.
But we showed them that we can do it. It is the, the, the community who lifted me with the ten dollars, the fifty dollars, the hundred dollars and on. And said, we believe in you, go get them. And I did.
Go get them, you did, yes.
And I did. And when the time is right again, I will come to you and ask you to do the same thing.
Absolutely, and we will be here. I can speak for myself, but I know I can speak with a lot of people in the community. Because having you there is not only something to be really proud. But also knowing that our interest will be served. So it is a win-win either way you look at it. Investing in you is truly investing in the future of our kids. Dr. Anne, you couldn't believe that we would be able to do an hour. Because when you asked me how long this show would be, I said, well, the longest one was Papa, of course. One hour and thirty-something, the shortest one was forty-five. Guess what? You and I have been talking for about an hour now, a little over an hour. So coming to the end of this beautiful conversation. I wanna end or land the plane, so to speak, by asking you this. If you had one extra hour in your day, how would you spend it?
If I have one extra hour in my day, I will spend that time with my daughter. She has been so wonderful and so gracious as I give to the community. She understands the bigger impact, she understands why I am doing this. And I remember as clear as day, Professor, when I came to talk to her and I said, I want to do this. She already knew it was gonna be time consuming. And at first she said no. And she, her, Papa and I sat down and we talked a little bit. And she said to Papa, if I have to sacrifice myself. For kid, for kids in our communities and families in our community to be better, I am willing to do that.
And how old was she back then?
She was, she's now sixteen, she was fourteen or thirteen.
Oh my goodness. Look at that heart at fourteen.
Because she's now sixteen, so four years back.
Twelve, she was twelve?
Yes, she was twelve.
Wow.
Yes.
Well, like mother-like daughter.
And so supportive. And every time I am gone, she understands why I am gone. She complains very little. So if I had one extra hour in a day, I would spend it with her.
What a beautiful story of impact, what a beautiful conversation. Just as I mentioned earlier, it is an honor for me and a privilege to call you my sister. We've, I, I clearly remember the first day we spoke over the phone.
Yes.
I was, I was driving on I twenty-five thousand. And we started talking about personal development and you know me, I start sharing about Napoleon Hills and stuff. And he said, you are my brother, we need to be talking, we need. And from that day forward, it has exactly been like that until you got extremely busy. With the work that we assigned you to do, so I can't complain, that's all I'm saying. I've discovered about you today, things that I've never known for the like four or five years. However long we've, we've known each other, this conversation allowed me to know you at a deeper level. Because the part from Cote d'Ivoire was completely unknown to me.
Yeah.
I know what you've done here and that's what I like about this show. Because it, it, it allows me to know my friends at a deeper level. Papa and I have been here for what, like forever and we've been tight, you know how it is when we're around. But during my interview with him, I got to discover things that he never told me before, until he came to the show. So my ask is this, if you know anybody you think should be featured in this show, please. Let them come, please make the introduction. Because my goal is really to highlight the work that human beings are doing. That are impacted, impacting other human being positively. I'm not just like, of course, whatever you start, you, you need to start from where you are. So, and that is my community, that's where I started this show. But I wanted to go beyond, and I know you talked to me about a Latina lady that might come to the show. I can't wait to have her on the show. So Dr. Anne, thank you so much again.
I think you are going to enjoy her, her impact in the uh health. And, 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 and policy work is amazing. We are talking about a woman who is.
Wait, I can't wait.
Oh my goodness, a woman who is providing vaccines to our schools, that's how I came to find, find out.
Okay, okay, calm down now, calm down, you'll tell her story, you'll tell her story.
Um, it is going to be amazing. I love stories of.
Exactly. Wow, okay, well, I can't wait, I can't wait to have her on the show. So whenever you get a chance, make the connection and we'll make it happen.
Thank you so much.
You are most welcome.
It was such an.
Everybody else, thank you so much for joining us on another episode of the Mentium Podcast. Uh, particularly season two, Stories of Impact. Today was no different. I had the opportunity to speak to a sister, a friend, a warrior. Really, somebody who's serving the community day in and day out. And from every other end of the state of Colorado. Making our kids have better schooling, better education, overall, just better life. So thank you so much for joining us one more time and please tune in for the next episode. Thank you.